Call to order six thirty. Please rise for the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Start off tonight with student of the month.
We are going to start with Blake Willbury and Mrs. Hong Kong is the one who has nominated him. And Mrs. Hong Kong says Blake is a very hard worker. He comes to class ready to learn. He is focused on making sure he puts his best effort into assignments even when they are hard. He doesn't let other students distract him and ask for help as needed. This type of focus and dedication will take him far in life. Congratulations. And our intermediate student is Abel Lustrow. And Mrs. Schlemmer who's here has nominated Abel. She says Abel is a trustworthy student. He is well liked by his peers, always tries the best and is helpful and polite. Abel is a quiet leader filled with integrity and strong characteristics. Good evening. Our eighth grade student or middle school student of the month is our eighth grade Millie Smith. Come on up Millie. Millie is just a standout candidate for student of the month and student of the year really. She is a sad student. She is a meet students against destructive decisions. She's a very happy student. NJHS member, student council cheerleader, shooting stars choir, been missing females. Plus nails it with all of her grades, top academic student. So we are so happy to have her in the halls. Congratulations, Millie.
Good evening. From the high school, we have another great student of the month that was nominated by Mrs. Gasparay and that is Valerie Boy. Some things to say about Valerie. This is from Mrs. Gasparay that she's a leader, an excellent student, a thoughtful person. She's drum major and the only senior in the marching band. So she's a role model for all others. Probably no one knows how much she quietly does to support the band program and the band members. And she never requires accolades or attention. And I definitely would agree with that. Her silent leadership is unmatched, honestly. Some of her accolades at our school, she's been in the marching band for five years, the section leader. The drum major for two years. She's been all district honor band, Indiana band, masters association. And a member of the jazz band outside of band. Obviously she puts in a great deal of effort there. She's part of our sunshine club for three years, three years, the Leo club for two years and the secretary there. National Honor Society for two years. And obviously she's a great leader in our schools. She's part of our top ten. She'll probably be in the top three of our class of twenty twenty-six. And finally, just trying to figure out where she's gonna go on to further her education. Notre Dame or Purdue, astrophysics or physics will be her major. So I mean, she's just been outstanding. So congratulations Valerie.
Parents and students, if you want to leave at this time, it's the perfect time, but you're always welcome to stay if you want. Please feel free to leave if you wish. All right, next up, we have a presentation of Schmidt Associates on our facility study.
Good evening, everybody. Kyle Miller with Schmidt Associates. I have Catherine Roche here with me tonight. Anna Marie has another board meeting, so we're gonna do the best we can to kind of cover her parts. And she's much better at covering the space programming than we are, but we've got a nice summary for you tonight. I know you've had a chance to look at it and so we'll just keep this open. We'll try to zip through it as quick as we can. There's a lot of slides. I'm not planning on going through all of them. If we want to just go to, Shelley, if you just want to go to the second one here, the table of contents. I think what we'll do is we've already gone through everything up to about page twenty-six. We've done that at previous board meetings and if you're okay with it, we'll start at page twenty-eight and move on from there. I do want to thank the core group. A lot of them are here tonight. This may be our last meeting where we certainly want to come back. You know, anytime you need us, but I think this is probably kind of brings us towards the end of that facility study. And then obviously helping you make some decisions as you decide what are we gonna do. We want to be around for that. But those decisions really fall on you after we've given you kind of the data. So yeah, page twenty-eight, I think, if we know which one that is there. Okay, so these first three slides really focus on the programming, the space programming based on the core group meetings and what spaces you would really need in your elementary, middle and high school versus what you have now. And kind of adding up those spaces and seeing where we have some, maybe some shortfalls. And each of the buildings do show you need more space based on that programming. A lot of it is in, you can see the different areas here. If you can scroll up a little bit, Shelley, so I can see what that says. There we go. So classroom, this is elementary school, so the classrooms break it down by special education, student support, specials, gymnasium, those sorts of things and athletics. Cafeteria, kitchen, and then your administration offices. So the yellow is really what's programmed. That building's tight. That building's very crowded and we're not telling you anything you don't already know. We're showing a shortfall over there of about twenty-seven thousand square feet based on the program. When you add up the numbers to the right, those include walls, circulation, mechanical, electrical, plumbing. These individual numbers don't, but you have to take those things into account. If you're gonna add on to a building, you need to make sure you're allowing for those things that don't really go into the program, those kind of back of house things. So that's the elementary school. Give you a quick summary on the middle school coming up. That would be more in the specials area. Everything else was kind of even. Administration area, that's a small administration area. So that's one area we identified. That building about thirty-seven thousand square feet short for the middle school. We do definitely have a line between the middle school and the high school. We're trying to draw here so we can have two distinct buildings through this process. So the next slide. And then this is the, this is the high school. And again, about eleven thousand, not as much, not too bad a shape there, but some areas where, and we talked about having some more, maybe some more athletics, more entry areas, things like that. We'll show you on the floor plans what that means here in a minute.
How does cafeteria space get split between the middle school and the high school? Cause it's on both.
It's, yes, from what we're understanding, that gets used pretty well between the high school and the, and the middle school. So we didn't see any shortfalls there because of the size of it. It's being utilized pretty well. This chart here is a table. It's just kind of a summary, a quick glance that tells you, you know, the overall suitability score that we've talked about at previous meetings from kind of the, I'll say, the worst scoring to the best. Transportation center is scoring about forty-six percent on up to the elementary school, about a sixty-nine point four percent overall suitability. And again, we have all that broken down by systems, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, architectural, all those things. It also tells you what grades are being served, if they are serving any. Year built and then the additions and renovations and the size of the building. And then from our programming, kind of a quick reference as to maybe how big that building should be versus what it is. So this is just a chart we like to put together all of our facility studies so that you can just kind of do a quick check of where things are. So we'll read a little bit for you here. So the next three pages through this whole process, the, you know, staff, staff input, the conditional assessments, the space programming, all that starts to say, what do you need to do? What do you want to do? What are some of the priorities? So Monroe grade facility study outlined potential priority projects for consideration in the near, mid and long range future based on what the core group was tasked to review. And thanks again to the core group, several of them are here tonight. And they've had several meetings with them. We know you have regular jobs, but we appreciate you being part of that. We kind of broke the projects, potential projects into two different groups, kind of a base projects and an alternate or future projects. Depending on several factors in the future such as demographics, student enrollment, educational programming and available funding, the district will have important decisions to make to help shape the growth of the district. You can't do everything we've identified. We've tried to identify what the priorities are and now it's decision time. And that's standard for anytime we do a facility studies, it's identifying what the hot items are and then starting to put together what can we do based on those items. So if you want to flip to the next one, the base projects include, those included, the core group has identified as those are most likely to move forward in the near, near or mid-range future, meet the most current needs for the district. These projects would make an immediate positive impact for the district and are considered baseline improvements. However, not all projects can be completed at the same time due to funding. Therefore, the district will need to narrow down the priority projects and plan the phasing of each to best fit the needs and fundings of the future. So those base projects, and again, you don't have to do them all, you won't do them all, but what we identified, looking at the six different buildings, keeping them in the shape they are now and not doing, and using, and not building anything new, but maybe doing some additions. So at the elementary school, we want to look at maintaining that pre-K five grade structure. And then look at your conditional assessment upgrades and then at some additions and renovations to give you that building the space that you need. Looking at the middle school, maintain a six to eight structure. And then the conditional assessment items, the additions and renovations we identified there. The high school, maintain a nine to twelve grade structure and then the conditional assessment items, additions and renovations. The other three buildings, you may not want, may not do anything to these buildings at all. But we did identify items that could be, should be considered for conditional assessment upgrades only. That'd be the football locker room, football concession restroom building and the transportation building. We're not suggesting in the baseline projects, you're building new space onto those areas.
Can you remind me what conditional assessment upgrades are? That's just like.
Yes, yeah. So the whole team came through and looked at mechanical, electrical, plumbing, ceilings, interior flooring, you name it. What condition are things in that you have right now? We gave them a score on a zero to four basis. Anything that scored like a zero, one, they go on that list. We even put some two and two and a halves on that list. Two and a halfs you may not do right away, you may not do them at all, but we like to list them and say, you need to think about it and we put a cost estimate to them. Yeah, that's what the conditional assessment items are. So if you don't do any additions or renovations, a lot of times we know a district's not gonna do any additions or renovations, but they want to fix things that need fixed. Chillers need replaced, things like that.
But in the final product, those are prioritized too based on your assessment.
Yeah, and if you're gonna, yes, and if you're gonna do a, say you do a large project at the middle school and you're gonna add on to it or renovate it, then you need to go through that list of conditional items and do those things at the same time so they're all included in the project. And that's what that's about. So the alternate or future projects, the core group wanted to look at something different. The alternate projects are projects that provide a different approach to the base projects for Monrovia Elementary School. Instead of adding on to the existing building, the core group wanted to review the following options. Renovate Monrovia Elementary School to become a pre-K to two building and build a new three to five building. And we showed you last time that you can, there is room next to your football field to build what might be a three to five building. So there's room for that. Renovate Monroe Elementary, Monrovia Elementary School to become a pre-K to three building and build a new four to six immediate building. We talked about moving sixth grade potentially out of the middle school. So that, that could be an option. If you, if you made the elementary school pre-K to three, then you'd build a four to six. So building a three to five or a four to six, really about the same cost. It's just how you'd go about, you know, determining your grade structure. Core group wanted to review the potential of moving sixth grade to middle school since Monrovia Elementary School is already at capacity. Even with the proposed additions we're gonna show you in the base projects, this, this move can only officially happen if a new intermediate building is constructed. So that's something to think about. The future buildings were developed through the study as likely long-term and certainly worth considering. While upgrades at the school buildings are considered the highest priorities, the following projects were also reviewed. Build a new preschool, central office, operation building. We gotta do something with this space at some point, right, right here. Need more room. And so we're seeing a lot of districts that are, that are kind of building new preschools because of that demand for preschool. And maybe a central office could go along with that and your operations staff could have a house as well. So that's, that's a future. Maybe you determine it sooner than that, but at the core group thought that might be something to think about. And then build a new transportation building. We know that building is scored the worst. It's not in the best location. It has its issues. So you probably wouldn't want to dump a lot of money into it. Someday you might consider, should we look at building a new transportation center somewhere in the future? So these, these photos here really just show the puzzle piece meetings. We had this whole table full of drawings and puzzle pieces. We bring them to scale so that the core group can start moving things around and say, if you could rearrange your building, how would you do it? So that was what this was all about, to help us determine space and help us to put together a plan. So if you want to go to the next one, this shows your existing layout now. With all the different classrooms identified and we have them color coded. You can even see your title one upstairs and your MEP. If you flip it, this is the base, this is, the next one is base project number one. So if we were to add on to that building, keeping the seven hundred fifty enrollment, but give them the space they need, we really are looking at trying to get the grade structures better together, but most of the work is really the addition. So you can see we have a new gymnasium to the upper right side there. That'd be the southeast, I guess, of the building. Some MVP space, some restrooms, some more classrooms in that area, a fab lab came up. And then over on the, down here at the bottom, taking your existing gym, which is kind of small, make that a multipurpose area. And then add a community pre-K to four, pre-K, funny guy says, pre-K over here and another drop-off area. So you can see the different things we're talking about here on the left side. Again, a fab lab was talked about, some additional restrooms, new gym space, multipurpose space that could be used for many different things after school care. Cafeteria dining space again was, was in pretty good shape, but we were looking to maybe expanding the seating and the serving line a little bit here if we kept this, this grade structure. So that, that is kind of that baseline project for the, for the elementary school. And then the next page is what if you didn't do any building additions here, you considered building that other building, whether it's going to be a three, four, five or four, five, six. Then if you scroll up just a little bit, Shelley, I think this one here is the pre-K two on the left side here. Yep, pre-K three. Really, it's taking your existing space and just reworking a little bit to put the grade structures together. You can also get an extra classroom out of these spaces. Like if you've got five now, you can go to six, for instance, because you've moved some of the, some of the students out. We've also looked at the life skills over here, some other classrooms and a fab lab again, project lead the way, multipurpose here and then keeping your gymnasium here. So those two are basically very similar to each other. It's just a different grade structure. So obviously if you have pre-K to two, you're gonna have more freed up space there than if you do here. If you, if you have a pre-K three, a little tighter, but then you're moving sixth grade over, you're freeing up room in the middle school. So different ways to look at this. This is the puzzle piece meeting for the, for the middle school and we had great participation. We also have video of this where the, we, you know, we let the principals talk about why they came up with this and what. So we have that as something we can share with you. Next slide, please. So this is the existing layout now. We've tried to identify where the red line is. We do understand there's some shared spaces, certainly choir, band, auditorium, those areas. But really the left side here is the middle school. You have a large courtyard that just doesn't really function much. So what could we do about that to give the space we need? So the next slide. The major items here are adding a gym, adding some lockers down here in this area. Trying to improve circulation up in here by putting in, by filling in that courtyard really. So you have a new office area, a new drop-off area to identify the start of, the front of that middle school a little bit better. A little bit more space in the administration area and really improve and putting all the grade structures together. There are some classrooms that are in the high school that we would want to pull over to the middle school. That's art, PE band, computer science, those sorts of things. And then also the ag STEM lab, getting those right sized in the middle school. Space for general music, media center, improving that media center, upgrading that. This also includes not just those addition areas, but there are some renovations in those areas to rework those spaces. So we kind of look at these as additions and then minor renovations and medium renovations and approach it that way.
Is this like hypothetical? And I guess I'm thinking of that top left corner, right, where you're kind of showing the admin offices? I mean, that kind of goes out into the existing parking lot right now, I think, right? Like, like it's great to look at the building and say, oh yeah, we could do this, but does it fit on the ground?
Well, we've looked at the site too. Yeah, there's a site plan coming up, but yeah, this would give its own drop-off area on that area. It's, it's a little tight over there. There's not a lot of room, but there would, there wouldn't be a lot of parking there. I think students would still be continued to be dropped off at the high school up here, but this would be more of its own entry area and its own identity. It's front of, front of the building. But we do have a site plan that's coming up here in a minute. It shows you where that is. So that's, that's the middle school. If you keep the current grade structure as it is, and this kind of gives you the extra space you need. And then the high school, there's the puzzle pieces for the high school. Andrew did a great job describing this one as well. That's the existing layout that you have now. So if we go to the next one, this starts to show the possibilities. Reorganizing, I'm just gonna kind of go down here, reorganizing the classes, departments to be together. There's a lot of spread out right now, so that's one thing that can be done relatively easily. Additional resource rooms, additional multilingual space, additional student restrooms. The specials are the areas where they were really kind of short. So this shows three court gymnasium. You could do a two or a three. I think we have, actually have a three priced in our estimate. We're doing a lot of two court ones. We're doing one at Cloverdale right now for a two court. That might make more sense. But we see that's an area of need. That's, that's a tough area to build, but that's probably the best way to do it. And you can reshape that whole front entry there, give this, give it a much more stronger front entry and curb appeal. But gymnasium's a common area and restrooms and really dress up your main entry to the administration and your main entry to the gymnasium and be able to separate those off. Media center, multipurpose space, group the ag broadcasting and CTE together. That's one thing that the core group wanted to do in the puzzle pieces. Relocate the bulldog blessing and then some additional staff restrooms, staff workrooms. Administration area is really just a, a more, a refresh and add on to that administration area for conference rooms, things they need. And better circulation and you can see the white area is more of a circulation and really just redefining that front entry to the building. We heard that a lot. We heard that in staff input, you know, when we were talking about some curb appeal and those sorts of things. That's where those things start to come into play. Again, these are preliminary. They're a start, but this is how we would start every project. And then as you sit down, if you decide you're gonna do this project and this project only, you sit down, you work, start working through all the details and make sure it works. And it'll, it'll shift and, and that sort of thing, but this is, this is how we usually start these projects.
Kind of the same question. Is there a site assessment for each of these plans then? Cause like that one gets way into the parking lot, right?
Yes, it does.
Creates a different problem over there.
Yeah, I think that may be the next slide, actually. Let's see if that is. Well, that's the second floor. The second floor, we wouldn't be doing a whole lot up there. We would keep those, kind of the walls where they are, if you will. But we may rearrange some of the spaces so that you can get your departments together and refresh those rooms. That area needs refreshed, so there's, there's some money in the, in the cost estimates to refresh the upstairs. So here's the, here's the, the drawing of the, so you can see that this is the elementary school. Let me see if I can step back here a little bit. Yeah, so well, here's, here's the addition we showed you for that kind of community area and a pre-K, this building addition. This could be a drop-off for that. It could be a few parking spaces, but there's not a lot of space out there. But that could be a, a nice little drop-off to keep them away from the rest of traffic. And then Shelley, if you scroll down a little bit, yes, we're talking about that building addition to the southeast, which would be that gym and a few extra classrooms, opportunity to change your traffic right now. I'm gonna ask you to go back up one more, Shelley, sorry. That's okay. Right now it gets really congested in here. If you, I'm sure you guys live it every day, right? And you got, you get traffic crossing each other. It's not the best situation. We thought about what about another stacking line to go along the road there because everyone shows up and starts taking up the road. And then bring that down here. And if you want to scroll down a little bit, we can add some, we can add some stacking here. And this could be your way in and back out. That way your front is really just for visitors. It could be for staff. And maybe the busing stays essentially about the same in this area. So that's an idea. And then if you go, go to the next one, it shows you the, the high school. So here's, here's your building addition. We don't have it show right here, but we would talk about maybe some sort of a, could be a parking area here or at least an entrance to better identify that entry there. And then here's our building addition for the high school. You can see where that starts to take up into that parking lot. And that, so that's, that's complicated. There's some demolition going on there, but a super nice entry area to the building. It looked like the best opportunity for that location. We also know we got some hill, some, some relief to deal with out there. And also improving that pickup, drop-off so that kids aren't walking across the traffic. So that's an idea. Certainly more, more refining needs to be done. Then you have the, the gym addition down here. One thing that's not shown is the courtyard being filled in, but we'll, that, that needs to be on there, so we're gonna add that in.
Theoretically though, if you did that, like right now, that little road that goes down by the building, like where everybody kind of goes to.
You mean here?
Like where the new building addition is where you're saying the gym would go, like the big block there? Like that little road gets cut off, right? Kind of right there where your mouse is? This side where the mouse is. This side where the mouse is?
Oh, okay.
Right?
Yeah.
Like right now, that's like a heavy traffic area right there and then they turn to go back to the elementary school, correct?
Right. Yeah, we would keep that connected somehow. I don't know why it's got to.
Something would have to happen.
Yeah, we would need to keep that connected, yes.
Cause like, yeah, that doesn't seem very.
Yeah, I think the main idea here was to redirect traffic so that it's going here, drop off and back out the same way. So that your traffic line here, that way students can walk out to the car. That's the main idea. Yeah. A lot more would need to be worked out on this to make it work, but I think that's just kind of generally the idea. Okay, so we go to the next one. These are the costs, these are estimates, but, and I'll just give you a general, and again, we've talked about our scope document. That is the document where we keep all of this information and all the assessment scores, all the cost. A lot of detail is in there. We will have that, that will be yours, right? And you can update it, it's updatable and those all created these numbers here. So I'll just go through one of these options here to show you what all the, all the information is. So the elementary school, this is the one with that baseline, keeping your existing 750 students. You're going to have the conditional assessment items. Those are the items that we kind of identified as, as kind of those high priority up. And I got them right here if we need to look at them, but those are the things that our team scored a zero, one, or even a two. Those are the conditional assessment items. So each estimate that you see is going to be set up this way. Then the building additions. This is adding that gym and the classrooms to the southeast. It's adding that multi, it's adding the pre-K area and the community room to the northwest and that entry area. That's what the building additions are. And then the interior space renovations. There are some areas inside where we're changing some things. We talked about that fab lab coming in, so there's going to be some walls to be moved. That's usually what this is when you're moving some walls. That takes a little bit more than just changing carpet, right? And that sort of thing. And then you have your traffic and site upgrades. So if you just do that project alone, those are the items you would do. And then a scope contingency allowance of 10%. That seems like a lot, but by the time you get into this and start working through a design process, there's going to be things that we, we just haven't seen yet, right? So that gives you a little allowance to make sure you're, you're pricing things the way you need to and give yourself plenty of room. So that gives you a total construction cost of eight, about 18 million. It doesn't stop there. We have to add soft costs. You're going to have an architect, engineer, you're going to have surveys, you may have a CM. You're going to have all these folks that may go into this number to help pay, to end furniture. If you're going to replace some furniture, those types of things would go into that soft costs. That gives you a total project cost at the bottom. We're also putting in inflation because this project's not quite ready to go yet. These are probably 20, if you were bidding this now, we would feel good about these numbers, but you're really not ready to go because you've got to go through a process of design. So you want to keep some inflation in there. So I think we've got a lot of safety in here, particularly if you start to do something relatively soon within the next year or two. Every project we've priced this way with the same format. So anyway, the, the, the base project for the elementary, if you decided we're just going to keep that building as it is, same grade structure, we're just going to add on and give the space they need to. That's the estimate we're looking at right now, about 23 million project cost. So the next one, very similar, very similar process with the middle school. Same items, same additions and renovations. One, one item I will tell you that I have to fix is this one. I, we did not include that court, that courtyard filling in, so we've got to get that square footage in there. So allow us to, when we wrap this whole thing up in the next couple of weeks, we need to adjust that number. So that's going to be a little bit higher. You can make a note, that's going to be a little higher, but that's the same thing, about 24 million right now, plus whatever we add in for that courtyard. We'll get that adjusted. And that would be the base project of keeping your grade structure the same, six through eight for the, for the middle school. The next one for the high school, keeping the same grade structure, nine to 12. Adding that, adding the gym area we're talking about, the new entry, the admin, all those things we looked at are, is about, it's, it's the biggest project. It's about 58 million to bottom. Again, I think that includes a three court field house. So if you ended up, or practice facility, or whatever you want to call it, you could just go to two, two courts. And those are things you'll look at when you start looking at projects and budgets. Can we afford to do three? Do we need to do two? Make, maybe you add on the third one in the future, things like that. But that one, that's the biggest project that are about 58 million. And then the next, now football locker. Again, these may not be high priorities for you. If you, you feel like things are going fine out there, but we do need to replace maybe this or that. We've got that list of items. If the, if you decided we're going to go in and take care of the, the conditional assessment items that didn't score so well, maybe some plumbing, maybe some HVAC, it could be a $1.3 million project. We're not suggesting any additions or major innovations. These are just upgrades to things that didn't score that well. And, and really the, the restroom building is the same, football restroom building, same, same idea. Lot less items. We didn't find as many there, but it's the same thing, not, not adding on to that building, just looking at conditional assessment items. And then the transportation center, since one day you may build a transportation center, that is just doing some upgrades to upgrade those, the items that are out there. So again, we have this list of items in much detail and when, when we put out our final study, you'll see all those items. You'll see what those are in detail. Okay, now the alternate projects, call them the alternate or future projects. The first one is if you renovate the pre-K, the elementary to become a pre-K two building and then build a three to five building, what does that look like? So again, we have the conditional assessment items. We still have to deal with those. There's some interior renovations and then there's the, the traffic and site upgrades, but we're really not doing an addition of that building. So those costs are a lot lower. The big costs are going to be in building the new three, five building, right? That's a new building, but it's going to certainly give you a lot more space. We've talked about that. That could be the possible of where, possibility of where you go in the future. And if you do, that could be a $53 million project plus inflation, whatever inflation is at the time. Maybe, maybe costs are coming down. I don't know, but I doubt it. So we can hope. So the next one is the same, it's essentially the same thing. It's pre-K to three and building a four to six building. So again, it's moving the sixth graders out. That's about the same price because you're, it's going to be the same size of building, whether it's, you know, three to five or four to six. If you decide you want to budget for a preschool, central office, operations building, whatever that building becomes, that would be about 50,000 square feet is our estimate. We think we can pull it down some, but it just initial, um, look at that with some site work. That could be a $25 million project. I will tell you, we've been, we've, we're doing a preschool right now in Madison and that's about where it is. They're not putting administration offices in there, but they do have a lot more classrooms than what you'll need. So that's, that's a, that's for the preschool administration office. And then the last one, this is if you had to build a new transportation building. We've compared this to some other ones. We've done several of these recently and the size of your district, how many buses you have. That could be about a five to $6 million project. And also if you, you know, east of the football field where we looked at putting a new potential building over there, there's still room to the south of that where you could even do a transportation building. You could do your, there, there's room to build some building there, whether it's transportation or your, a, a new central office preschool, that sort of thing. There's, there's room for that. Okay, so this summary here, again, it adds up to a lot of money. And when I fix the elementary, the middle school, it's going to add a little bit more. But this is about 110 million dollars for all those base projects. And if you flip to the next one, Shelley, thank you, the, nope, the orange one went up. There you go. These are not additive, these are just alternatives. If you decide to do this, then obviously you don't do the top one in Monroe, at Monrovia Elementary School. You, you'd replace this with it because you're going to build a new building, so on and so forth. These two are just, those are standalone. If you decide to do those, then those would be what they are. So we think those are the, the large items. I'm going to let Catherine come up. You got any questions on this right now? There's a lot of information moving quickly.
I guess I have two questions.
Okay.
One is I'm a little puzzled, I mean, like I can't believe how much the central office preschool costs, 23 million for 50,000 square feet when I'm looking at the high school or the middle school for 32 million. What makes that so expensive? I mean, how big of a preschool?
Well, it's a brand new building. It's a brand new site. That's probably makes it the, the difference. Fifty, fifty.
Wouldn't this new, new four to six elementary bill or intermediate building be a new building as well for 32 eight?
Which one?
The, like that slide prior to that, I think it is. We're saying like a middle school new bill, let build new four to six intermediate building, which would be a building down on the football field, right? That one's 32 million, but to build central offices and a preschool is 23 million. I mean, like what makes that so expensive, I guess?
Well, they, the elementary school, if you go, yeah, let's see, that one's about 82,000. So that's the 32 million. Yeah, go back up to that one. Here you go, over here.
Sorry.
Either one of those.
And I'm just looking for like kind of a direction.
No, no, I, no, I understand.
I envision a preschool being just a handful of classrooms and, you know, a handful for admin versus a four to six, which seems like it'd be a lot of classrooms.
I think Anna Marie estimated about 45,000, 46,000 square feet to put your central office, boardroom, preschool classes, some operations offices. She estimated about 46,000 square feet. She said, let's round it to 50 for now. So it's probably bigger than it needs to be. There's no question. And we can even look at it, take a quick look at it and see if it's a little bit bigger. But that, that equated to about 20, what was the?
It was 23 for the one and 33 for the other.
There, there you go. There you go. Yeah, 21, about 50,000 square, that's like 400 bucks a square foot, right? That's really what we're using for construction costs, about $400 square foot. We're using that for most of these. So that's, that's where you get the 21 million in, in construction costs. Then you're adding all your stuff you have to add. And then if you go back up one, Shelley, this one is 82,000 for the elementary school times about 40. That's going to get you in that 32 million. So there's, they're, they do kind of correlate. We just got to make sure we get the, the size of the preschool administration office.
I guess I was just thinking, like, I get that it's 400 square or $400 per square foot, but Ron, you're putting cafeterias and.
Yeah.
You like a lot more, what I would consider expensive space, right?
Yeah.
Than I would think you would with that. I, I don't know.
Is it fair to say that I think that those numbers were based off of the trend that we've been seeing? Which is that districts are really making it a, a major hub? If you want, you know, the admin and operations all under one roof. And I think it depends on too, right? If you start as an infant age group or if you start at three year olds.
Right, right.
Um, depending on how.
And I think you assume that the one we're doing that down in Madison right now is starting with little babies, right? And we're not doing that everywhere. So that, that's something that plays into it. We really have a program that building with you, so we were making some assumptions.
Okay, so these are just big broad numbers.
Yeah, since they were, they were potential future type projects to build that up. We, we assume it is. You, you may say otherwise, and if you do, we'll.
And then my second question, I don't know if this is for you or you and I don't have an answer today, but like say we were to build a new building, like what's the cost to turn on the lights? I mean, you got to have admin and cafeteria staff, things like that. Do we have an idea of like, you know, if you were to build a new elementary right now, like what's, what's the cost to operate that building?
Well, I could, we could get you some numbers. I don't know that off the top of my head, but yeah, there's, there's certainly the electricity. Turn the lights on, you're going to figure, you're electric side only, right? So it costs a little bit more. Your, your elementary right now is costing you about $2 per square foot per year. So you got, can't remember how many square feet. I think it's up there somewhere. Can you scroll back?
Well, I guess where my head's going is, you know, I mean, you could build a building, but not be able to afford to operate it.
You got to make, yeah, right. You got, you're going to have your own expenses and your biggest.
Which would do no good at all.
Yeah, right.
So I mean, that might be the deciding factor too. I mean, even if you think, oh, this is the best option.
Yeah, if a building's 100,000 square feet and, and the way your buildings are running, because we did the energy study and you figure $2 a square foot to run that building a year, that's $200,000 a year just to turn the lights on. To kind of answer your question, and then anything else that goes along with that. Those, that's going to be your biggest cost though, is, is the electric. You're not going to have gas because you don't have that.
Well, then you got to staff it, right?
You got to staff it, but maybe you also move existing staff from the other building over to the new building. So that, yeah, all those things have to be looked at.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, I'm going to let Catherine come up for a minute and I'm going to wrap us up right after that. You've asked us, we, in staff input, it was like, how do we get curb appeal? How do we get student pride and staff pride? And, and anytime you do any of these projects, any of these projects you're doing, there's an opportunity to make things look awesome and better without going crazy. Right? So I think that's what Catherine does. She's one of our brilliant interior designers and so she's going to show you some inspirational images that we showed the core group, I think, last week it was, and then a few ideas that she's put together for Monrovia here, so.
I did have the pleasure of participating in the building assessments. So it was a great opportunity. I became familiar with the buildings and their existing conditions. You have done a great job of maintaining overall. I was very, very impressed. So what we call this is a little bit of a visioning exercise, but after the assessments and during, like Kyle mentioned, some of the biggest things we were hearing was, you know, the curb appeal. And when you first step out, do you know exactly what entrance to go into for which particular activity? And can you see that from the road well? And, and then when you get inside, do you feel the school pride? And how could we take that, you know, a level up? And so what this is, is a compilation, if you can scroll up just a little, or sorry, down. Yeah, just to fit a little bit more of those on. Yeah, so it's, it's compilation of projects that we have done. And again, just to really show how big or how little we can do on the interiors. And some of this is architectural in terms of it being built in, but most of it is, um, it, it's been applied after the fact. So it comes down to graphics and branding and accent paints and wall coverings and just some simple flooring changes to show the impact that it can have. When you have, you have your branding, it's great. You have a bulldog and you have the, the colors. So it's just carrying that through all the way regardless of which building you're in. And what we could do to help any visitor or staff identify that they know they're in a Monroe Greg building, regardless of where you're at. So, you know, just to show how we can apply that in the entryways and the corridors, having some pops of color. And again, just in a, a gym or a field house, you know, carrying that through on the floors, the walls, the bleachers, I'm really feeling that school pride. And so a lot of what we were hearing with the core group was this is something now, obviously it's a very vibrant blue, but just the idea of having some pops of the accent colors. And, you know, having more wall graphics showing, whether that's a, a wall covering such as that. And something that I want to mention here, as I mentioned in that meeting was, you know, if we're mentioning wall covering or graphics, you do not need to change the wall type. We can do that to any existing wall type that you have. So again, i- if it's something that's just more of a refresh and you're not doing an overhaul, it is completely feasible to do a lot of this and, and bring in that school pride. If you want to jump to the next one, so this is where we looked at exterior images. And again, what can we do to not only refresh the exterior, but again, bring that pride from the inside out and enhance the curb appeal? I mean, this is one example, this is, you know, if you were to build new, these are concrete panels, precast. So here we were able to do a custom design and didn't modify the, the price. And then, you know, you had that school logo all around on all sides of the building. But if it's not new, we can still have the ability to add the accent colors, to add the logo, to add the, the wording. And sometimes just making something supersized, making a super graphic. You know, taking your, your initials and blowing them up is what not only gives it a fresh look, but again, draws attention and it, it makes it very clear, you know, this is the athletics entrance. This is the admin entrance, just with signage. And, and that's the other part of this exercise. It was starting to look at, you know, not only branding, but signage and wayfinding, because we know how important that is. You want any visitor to show up and know exactly where to go when they get here. So, so that was the purpose of that and it scrolled on just a little. There are a couple more. And so something like that's really cool. You know, if we were to add some high volume glazing somewhere, just what you can do with window film and graphics. And, and so then taking that a step further, if we're just saying what if and, and dreaming big, this is a rendering that we created that if you were to have a new gymnasium and, you know, a, a new entryway, what that could start to look like with pulling in your branding colors, not too much, but in, you know, a subtle way. but in, you know, a subtle way, um having the logo. I mean, again, just getting some, you know, nice big letters out there, um so it's visible from the parking lot. So that's just one vision that we had as an exterior view, and then we moved into the inside. You know, when you come into the space, how's how does that make you feel? You know, what does it look like? And so this is just one scenario that we came up with in terms of um working graphics and color into the walls, putting your logo into the floor. You already have a lot of great terrazzo that's existing. So a lot of that we wouldn't need to mess with, but if this were new, we could pull that through, you know, to have in the entryway. You could have a custom logo. But again, having that signage for that's the athletics corridor. Again, just things that we can do that are simple with lighting and acoustic elements that you see from the ceiling. That's doable with existing spaces. That doesn't, you don't need a new building for that. But again, just bringing in some some freshness to the space. And then if you can scroll down one more. So here, um this is, as as I, we know it's lovingly called the Green Mile. I walked down that hallway many times during the assessments. But, you know, what I heard as we were walking through um with staff is, you know, it is, it's a very expansive corridor. What can we do to break that space up? And again, uh bring in that school pride and the branding. So again, just some examples of, you know, enlarging the bulldog uh into a super graphic. Or the other side, it's just repeating, um you know, the the name. If you have a um, you know, fight song, um just anything that really gives the students and staff that connection as they're walking through. Um again, pulling in the color. You do accents that are are subtle, but you still have have the branding aspect. And then just, again, being able to break those spaces up throughout. So any questions on that? I mean, th- those last couple renderings you saw are, of course, hypotheticals. But we we like to start brainstorming early on um and seeing, you know, what this could be.
Vibrant blues that Catherine showed you a little while ago, Tipton. Tipton's elementary, middle, and high school are all one building essentially, and they have a, you think this is a long mile. I mean, it is a long, long, so it was important there to do something, make it more interesting. So there were a lot of opportunities to different graphics and and things along the way to break up that long corridor. You got the same situation here. So there's opportunities to to make that interesting, you know, be proud proud of it, so.
Well, our conditional assessment also include things about safety. I mean, like, I'm kind of curious, like, you know, as somebody that's not in our building all the time.
Yeah, I would say the main thing certainly with our 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 floor plans at least, and putting together kind of the layouts we did, it's secure entries, secure entry into the middle school, secure entry into the into the high school, secure into athletic areas, so that can be s- you know, you can coordinate off so people can't get into the rest of the building. Anytime we're laying out spaces like that, we're always thinking about that sort of thing.
But the but if we say with the existing buildings, do you have stuff in your assessment that kind of addresses that as well? If there's gaps?
Yeah, yes, yes, we definitely did it, and we did security cameras. There's there's some, I think in the assessment, that's some of our priorities to add some more security cameras and add more.
So when we get the more detail, we'll see that level of detail.
And it's all, it's all right here. It's all right.
Okay.
Yep.
And then I'm just.
And there's some costs in there for that, too, Tom.
Right, and I guess I'm just kind of curious, like, and look, this is not really that important, but did you have concerns with our, like, our drop-off parking lot area out in front of the high school?
Yes, yeah. That's why we were trying to look at a different way to drop kids off and get get the cars back out, so they're not cruddy in front of. We we talked to our our civil engineer spent the day out here with yours with your SROs.
Okay, so they would look at all that as well?
Here's what happens at the elementary school, that's why we'd have to get parking o- traffic over here in separate. We need to get kids at the high school from not crossing in front of drop-off traffic. So, yes, we've looked at those things. There's there's still more to look at on that when you actually do something, but yeah, we were.
But it is addressed in that.
Yep, that's all part of the safety, and that's that's um and and there's there's costs in there for those things, too.
Okay, thank you.
So that that kind of brings us to the end. So I think the the next thing really is next steps. Well, so here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna take, we're gonna take what we've done. These have been PowerPoint summaries that you've seen now and for, you know, the last few months. We're gonna put that into a a final manual. It'll have a lot of information in it, but we also have the live information, because, you know, you set one of these manuals on your desk, and it's gonna start getting old, right? But it's not gonna change. So we wanna make sure we have the live information, so you can update it, but at least the manual gives you a starting spot, so you can look through that. We would love to help with help you with, we've, at this point, a lot of times, we we may go to a board work session if we're invited, or or go to one of your retreats, spend an hour at one of your retreats and say, how can we help move y- your decision-making forward? Because as you're deciding what to do here, uh we'd be glad to help, because there may be things that you're gonna go, well, you should probably ask, you know? So we'd be glad to help do that, we do that often, and just uh that, we won't charge for that. We just wanna help you kind of help move 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 yourself forward, because now it's decision time. Now that we've identified what we've done, it's it's uh decision time. I know that there's been some meetings on funding and and how that's coming along. Obviously, that's the big part of it. You know, how much do you have and when kind of drives what you can do. So, okay, anything else, any other questions for us?
I'll I'll talk a little bit about kind of where I I think we go next, cuz I think, you know, the public is probably wondering what what we do next. And I've talked to the board a little bit, but um one of the goals I turned into the board this year was was by May first of twenty-six, so toward the end of the school year, that um we would take this plan that is gonna be done, obviously, in the next couple of weeks. And we then have a building plan of what choices we have made and and what we are doing with our buildings by May first. Now, what's it gonna take to get there? Well, a lot. Obviously, we're gonna want some staff input, we're gonna want community input. What it's gonna take to do that is probably do a a couple to a few board work sessions to where we invite the community and staff in, and we have an open conversation with what's our priorities? How do those priorities lead us to what facility needs we see? So I'm hoping by May first, that's where we're at. We know kind of what we're improving, what we're refurbishing, what we're building. So then um then we work on the funding part of it. Obviously, from what you've seen there, we cannot afford to do every single thing that's on that list. You know, hundred and ten million dollars worth of improvements at all three buildings, we don't have that type of funding. I'm thinking we're gonna be somewhere in the the mid thirties to low forties uh millions of what we're gonna have available. So we are gonna have some choices to make. But I think we can get a lot done for that amount. So just wanna be very transparent with those kinds of uh ideas of where I think we're we're going next. So basically, what I'm telling you is be on the lookout, once I can talk with the board about maybe some upcoming work sessions that community and staff can come to and give us their input on what our priorities are. And um hopefully, we might even be doing some strategic planning that's gonna help us identify those priorities, too. I'll get to that one later in the meeting when we talk about other discussions. So anyway, I at least wanted to add that to the the meeting, so. And like you said, we might even bring Schmidt Associates back to some of these work sessions to help us talk through some things. I think it'll be valuable to have Chad Blacklock and Luke Brugman from Stiefel here, so they can talk to us about uh funding sources and that sort of thing. So, yeah, it'll be one big uh meeting, several meetings probably to get us worked through this, so. That's all I had for that.
Thank you, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Everything, and thanks to the core group, they've been fun to work with, so.
Thank you.
All right. Next up is public comments. And we've had nobody sign up for public comments. So we'll go on to item number five, which is under consideration minutes of the October eighth meeting.
Move to approve executive and the regular.
I'll second. Mr. Elliott, Mr. Sears, any further discussion on the me- minute minutes? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four to zero. Move on to item number six, consideration of the claim.
Yes, and there was a few things I was gonna alert you to, and I don't have my notes, but you have them for me, thank you. I left them over on my computer. So there's a few things that aren't normally in the claims. We made a couple debt payments. Those are payments we make on uh debt we have incurred over the years for various things, whether that's bonds or construction, things like that. So we made debt payments, debt payments of eight hundred four thousand, six hundred twenty-four dollars, one hundred eighty thousand, six hundred seventy-five dollars, and five hundred forty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-five dollars. We made those a little bit earlier than normal, but that's to free up uh debt for our new bond that we um passed. We're paying energy harness, that's our LED lighting, uh one hundred forty-four thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars and ninety cents. That is for a bunch of the lights that are coming in uh this week for our athletic fields. So we're gonna get started hopefully later this week on um our remaining athletic fields. That's uh baseball, softball, and soccer, and then we'll pay them for the installation when installation is done. Our annual workers' comp insurance payment, we made that to the tune of fifty-three thousand, five hundred fifty-four dollars. Paid HP Legacy, that is the uh company that did our urinal project over the summer, replacing those uh waterless urinals, twenty-two thousand, four hundred eighty-nine dollars and sixty-three cents. And I just got the paperwork to close that project out today, so that went very smoothly. HP Heating and Cooling, we had to uh replaced a compressor, and that was thirty-nine thousand, four hundred forty-five dollars. And then we paid the Community Foundation of Morgan County, uh fourteen thousand dollars. That was um, that's the money from the cell tower that we make that goes towards student scholarships. They need to get that money in there, so they knew how many scholarships we were gonna give. So that is, oh, and other than a, we had a three payroll month, so that's why claims might be a little bit higher than you're used to also. So that's all the comments I had on claims.
Motion to approve the claims?
I make motion to approve claims.
Mr. Sears, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion on the claims?
The lighting thing, is it still on budget or, I mean, what do we expect it to be?
Yeah, I mean, a few here or there of of things that they didn't see that we caught, and I said, let's go ahead and do those few lights, too. But, yeah, overall, it's been right where we wanted it. Yeah.
All those in favor, claims, uh say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four to zero. And uh we'll do payroll. Do I have a motion to approve payroll?
So moved.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Item number seven, consideration of the personnel recommendations.
Yeah, just a few comments on personnel, um under classified. We've got Linda Louis, uh bus driver retiring at the end of December. Wanna thank her for her years of service to Monroe Gregg. One change to the ECA ancillary report, down at the very bottom, Rachel Kratzer. That is changing from a twelve hundred dollar stipend to six hundred. It was just a change in um kind of the status of the person that she's actually um mentoring there, which made it a lesser stipend, so we worked that all out, so that was one change there.
You said it is six hundred dollars?
Yes, it's changing to six hundred from twelve hundred.
In this packet.
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's been changed for you guys.
From what we saw earlier.
Correct, so make sure you you saw that it changed from your earlier packet. And I think that's it for my comments.
I have a motion to approve the personnel recommendations?
Are we doing them all at once?
Or are we doing them separate? Uh, I think we could do them all at once, they're. I have a motion to approve all of the personnel reports.
So moved.
Mr. Elliott, uh second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Item eight.
I was about to ask you before when I should submit. I do have a question, I know, and Linda Louis, her letter to where she resigned, or whatever, it's been good written for our Transportation Department with Perry and Manette. Also, one of her uh topics was concerns with the crosswalk.
Yeah.
Is that a, well, it is a concern, obviously. Is that a concern that we can do anything with? Or is that a concern that we have to partner up with the town, or is that the state?
From everything.
I've kind of had questions about that, cuz I know we were required to put in sidewalks on our property. We don't really even have sidewalks all the way up there.
Right.
Which I know is not on our property, but I think all I'm getting at is that does seem like a good a a good concern.
Yep.
And I, you know, I don't know if it's something that we can address, or how would you even go about doing it?
We've, very good question, and and we've taken action on that. And thanks to Perry and Manette attended a meeting where that came up. And then Scott Hamilton, when he was still our safety director, he kind of had an in with a guy at the the State Department of Transportation, and he kind of had a conversation with him also. Everything we're hearing, and Perry, tell me if I'm wrong, it's pretty much a State Department of Transportation issue. And there's not much we can do, like, we can't go and paint a crosswalk or put a a stop, you know, a a crossing light or anything like that, where hands are really tied. I'd love to be able to help out and do that, but everything we're being told, anything that has to happen, there's gonna be a State Department of Transportation issue.
I was afraid of that.
Yep.
Yeah, and they they were just there working on all that sidewalks and crosswalks.
So we do have a crosswalk somewhere downtown.
They put a new crosswalk in front of down there by the main street and all that, yeah. But I don't think it costs thirty-nine, I think it costs both backstreets. I don't think there's one across thirty-nine, I'm like, they. And the county of the state did that, cuz I seen them go, when they put forward the uh the handicap, you know, to every every corner, they cut that out and put it up.
But it's a state decision, not a town decision, is what we're saying. I mean, it's obviously not ours, right? I mean, we we can't do that, it's not our property.
Right, that's that's what we're being told.
Just trying to figure out who called.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if we can make a a request or a not a not a complaint to them, but, you know, just, hey, we just noticed this is something that, you know, we do have a lot of students that, whether they're walking to school or just going to get a pop or something.
I think we've made it pretty clear that we feel it's a it's a dangerous situation, and all we got was, uh, there's no funding for that. That's kind of the words we were we were told.
Couple gallons of paint.
But we will, we'll continue to try to stay on top of it, see what we can get done. Yeah.
Item number eight, consideration of the master teacher contract.
Yeah, so last week, we had to hold a hearing on the tentative agreement. Teachers' Union ratified, and then we had to hold a hearing and take public comment. Main public comment we heard was from Casey, from um kind of compiling stuff she heard from other staff. We appreciate all your your comments. One thing I do wanna mention again, that I mentioned last time, was the new athletics ECA schedule. We were able to increase pay in a lot of areas, but we did that at a zero budget increase. Basically, we moved money around. One example is, there were a bunch of summer camp stipends in there. Those were taken and eliminated, and money was moved into coaching areas for that, cuz we just felt like, well, coaches are gonna be doing those summer camps anyway. We moved that money into there, they're they're technically being paid for it, so. Not a lot of comments there, we discussed it at the at the hearing, what what was going on, so. Yeah, with that, I just.
But just to be clear, that was athletic ECA money just reallocated to other, I mean, redistributed to athletic ECA, right? Just to be clear.
Correct.
Cuz I could see her about that.
No, no increases in the budget.
Okay, or and we didn't take from some other area of the district?
Nope, it was with in athletics.
Okay.
Bet.
Who who decided on like the final scale? Was that the AD?
AD made the um recommendation. We kind of talked through it. Both uh Teachers' Union and uh myself and the rest of the people I had helping me, and we came to agreement on pretty much what he what he brought to us, cuz he did a very good job with it. But he went and did a a lot of research, both within our conference, at what other coaches were being paid, and then other schools within our areas, and what he's came up with is it definitely makes us more competitive.
Can we just get that comment in the minutes? I mean, I can't see people wondering about that, if we can just put the comment just in there, just to.
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the teacher contract?
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four to zero. Item nine, consideration of the insurance renewal.
Yeah, I wish I had better uh better news here, but uh like anything, insurance is increasing. We're gonna end up with at about a fourteen percent increase for property and casualty, so this is not health insurance or nothing. This is just our property and casualty, which is, you know, property damage, workman's comp, all that stuff. But thank you to Perry and Kelly Kizzi, uh because when we started looking at some of the values they had here, especially on some of our equipment and buses and things like that, we felt they were too high. So Perry definitely took a look at all of our equipment and buses, and we dropped the values on some of those, because they were obviously, like I said, too high. So that brought down the increase we were possibly gonna see if we were left in the same. It was over twenty percent, if we would have left everything as it was. So um we're gonna wanna get it down to about fourteen, which honestly, I'm talking to other superintendents, they're dealing with the same thing. We're we're kind of lucky that we're not being hit with this type of increase to property and casualty, plus about that same amount on health insurance. Our health insurance only went up two and a quarter percent, because we're in a trust, and the trust is very healthy. So I know superintendents that are getting hit with that much on property and casualty, and then fifteen plus on health insurance. So we're we're lucky in that regard, so. Yeah, that's my recommendation, is to go ahead and accept that uh that renewal.
Move to approve.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second? Mr. Elliott, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Kennedy, any further discussion on the insurance? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Item ten, first read for the board policy.
Yep, so Neola, which is the group we work with that, uh, gives us our board policy, um, adjustments, uh, from time to time. Uh, sent out this update. Um, obviously, they, they basically keep us up to date on both state and federal policy that, that might need to be looked at and changed. So we met with our representative from Neola a couple of weeks ago, went through, uh, this update, uh, changed the areas that we thought we needed to change. So no action needs to be taken tonight. It's just letting the public know that we're doing the first read. It gives the board time to go through it all. It's in a couple of months to do all of that. Really, my only comments, uh, for the, the public, um, one of the big changes here is to Title IX. All has to do what's, with what's happened at the federal level from changing from one, uh, basically one president to another is what it came down to. So, uh, some Title IX changes, um, some changes to the anti harassment policy, but it's all actually pretty simple. It's a lot of wording and, uh, legal jargon and those types of things. So not much to say about those. This is our typical update. So like I said, no action needed tonight. It's just the first reading. Uh, we'll take action in, uh, December if we think everything looks good on your part.
No, not yet.
Nope, no vote. Nope.
So we'll move on to item eleven, permission to advertise request for qual-
Yeah, so, um, been talking with the board, um, through their memo that I send them in between board meetings. I kind of let them know kind of what's going on in the corporation in between board meetings and anything I need to let them know about. So one thing I, I discussed in that memo with them was I wanted to put out a request for qualifications or request for proposals, whichever one you'd like to call that, um, for some possible maintenance and janitorial services. So basically what I'm thinking of, of doing here, and this is, like I said, it's just investigating what's out there. Does not mean this is what we're doing. But I think in our, our situation with our finances and that sort of thing, we, we owe it to, to look to see how we can best, uh, spend our money. So, um, Brett Everett, our director of maintenance, has told me, he's not turned in a, an official letter yet and, and Brett gave me permission to talk about this. So, uh, he's looking at retiring in early January. Um, so I started thinking about what do we want to do maintenance wise. Uh, I think what, what I would like to do is go ahead and post that position, see who's out there in general, but then also get this request for proposal out to see if there's any companies and services out there that provide a maintenance guy. And could that possibly save us some money? Um, would we have to pay this company as much as we pay somebody that would be our own employee? Um, at the same time, maybe see what, uh, a company like that, if they could provide janitorial services. Now, one thing that does not mean, and I've already met with the janitors, I met them Friday to let them know, um, what this, what this is going to be, because I didn't want them thinking and, and not hearing from me personally, um, thinking that we're just going to bring a company in here and they're going to be replaced. One thing I told them is the only way I would work with a company that provides these services, if that company would come in and hire them as their employees. So if they're not willing to do that, then we're not going that route because I'm not going to do that to, to our current employees. Now, obviously, if it was worth our while to go that way, then those janitors would have a decision to make of if they wanted to be an employee of that company and, and that sort of thing. So, um, but I think we, like I said, we owe it to, um, our taxpayers to try to see if we can spend our money the most efficient way possible. You know, especially with the, the budget situation we're under. So, um, there is one company that has reached out even before any of this, um, and is very interested in working with us. So I've actually had a couple of meetings with them and, um, they already work with two very large school corporations, one being Jeffersonville down south and the other one being Tipton New School Corporation, more to the north around Lafayette, um, doing this very thing. They provide some maintenance services, some janitorial, um, outside stuff even. So that's kind of what I'm asking permission for is to put out a request for proposals. Timeline looks like we try to get this, um, advertised by next week. You have to advertise two times, um, two weeks and then, um, get the proposals in, uh, have a public opening of those. Um, more than likely, we would not be ready to, uh, have a company come on until probably July one. There's just way too much to undertake to get anything done, I think, this school year. Um, but you never know. We'll see. But July one, I think, is more, um, reasonable. So that's kind of the timeline I'm, I'm looking at. So I think that hit all the points I wanted to make. So that would be my recommendation.
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Elliott, any further discussion?
So this is just a request for information?
Yeah, they-
A request of information would, I should move forward.
Correct. So all it's going to be is, uh, we put out a very specific request of what we're looking for, respond to this information here, including, you know, what are you going to charge us for all of this stuff that we're asking you for? We have a public opening, um, talk with, obviously, Ryan and I will be talking about if it's, if it's a cost savings or if it's, you know, are we breaking even, whatever, that sort of thing. Let you guys know, uh, you'll, you'll be able to see all of those bids and then we make a decision from there whether we move forward. So, yeah, the, the only way we move forward is you guys would have to approve a contract if we think that that's the way to go. So this is just a request for proposals.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes three to one. Item twelve, acknowledge receipt of the Department of Education.
Yeah, so we received on October twenty-fourth, a letter from the DOE stating that we did not, uh, satisfy the funding floor for two thousand twenty-five. And when that happens, I'll go, I'll explain a little bit about what that means, but I first want to talk about what we have to do because that happened. We have to acknowledge receipt of this letter tonight, which is what we're going to do here in a second when, when we, uh, vote to accept that. It has to be put in our minutes and then this letter has to be put on our website and it's already up there. So it's already on our website. Um, and the, the other two will be satisfied, um, one tonight when we acknowledge receipt and then when the minutes come out, it'll be in the minutes. So basically, what this says, they broke down some numbers. So for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, we received in state tuition support, twelve thousand, two hundred fifty-six dollars, six hundred and, sorry, twelve million, two hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred twenty dollars. For the fiscal year twenty-five, we received twelve million, four hundred eighty-two thousand, uh, and seventy-seven dollars. The funding floor for twenty-five for us would have been six million, sixty-eight thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents. And for the fiscal year twenty-five, full-time teacher expenditures, um, was five million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, five hundred ninety-seven dollars and ninety cents. So basically, they're saying we should have spent a little over six million on teacher salaries and benefits. So I immediately talked to Chad Blacklock and I'm like, that doesn't make any sense to me. How can we not be, uh, hitting that funding floor? I feel like we are kind of overspending right now. It's the reason we made some cuts this year to some different positions, why we didn't fund some, you know, as some people left, we didn't backfill those positions. Um, so what we came up with from looking at some things, uh, what we talked about was in fiscal year twenty-four, um, that's when the larger increases came, which was getting the starting pay up to forty-five thousand. Um, and that, that increased the funding floor right there. Fiscal year twenty-five, we made some staffing reductions, um, while we did not get some increased basic revenue. But the funding floor doesn't reset to the lower amount moving forward. It stays where we moved it prior. So what we discussed is as we continue to make cost reductions, there's a pretty good chance we won't meet this in future years. So it's kind of like, to me, it's counterintuitive. Yes, I would agree, we didn't meet, meet the funding floor, but if you can't afford to meet the funding floor, why would you do that? So what I'm telling you is if we were to spend what they say we should spend, we'd be in a worse situation than we already are. I mean, to be frank, we're showing that we're going to end twenty-five spending probably over six hundred thousand more than we should. So how in the world can we meet the funding floor when we're already overspending? So that's just my two cents there. So there's no, there's no punishment for this at all, other than publicly talking about it and putting it on our website and that sort of thing. Um, one other thing that we're required to do that we did meet, it's required that we spend at least sixty-two percent of our education fund on teacher benefits and, uh, salaries. And we met that, we were at sixty-two point five percent. So, yeah, it's just a little counterintuitive to me at, at times on how that, how that works, but-
What's the funding floor again? Like, do we know how that's calculated? May, I-
The amount of money you spent from the year prior.
So that, this is saying in two thousand twenty-five, we spent six million, sixty-eight thousand.
Just to clarify, the year before, our funding floor was five-two, but we spent a six. So we way shot the funding floor that year.
Right.
Which is why we've gotten in this situation for it.
Right. I guess I'm just trying to reconcile the four hundred and twenty thousand dollar difference, which is I guess what you're probably trying to do as well, right?
Yes.
Like, I'm struggling with that number a little bit.
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions that I can maybe answer for you?
I don't think so.
Okay.
So do we, I mean, do we have to vote to?
I would vote to acknowledge it, yeah.
Do I have a motion to approve the receipt?
So moved.
Mr. Elliott, do I have a second? Mr. Sears, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes four to zero. Item thirteen, consideration of the youth leadership stipend.
Yeah, so the following, um, following staff get a, uh, individual stipend amount of one hundred sixty-six dollars and sixty-seven cents. Um, Elizabeth Becker, Amy Dunn, Tina Hall, Tim Savini, Greta Sloan, Jenny Tower. And that is, like I said, that comes out of the, um, youth leadership stipend for some work they did.
I'll move to approve.
Mr. Kennedy, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Sears, any further discussion on the youth stipend? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Passes four to zero. Item fourteen, consideration of the extension of the rental property contract.
Yeah, I'd like to propose to the board that we go ahead and extend the, um, farm ground rental agreement with Aaron Kibbit for another year. Um, originally, we put that that was just going to be a, a one-year, um, contract. But, um, we kind of didn't get to probably either bidding that out again, um, early enough because now is when they need to be putting fertilizer down. And of course, me not being a farmer, I didn't have a clue about that. So, um, I'd like to go ahead and just make the recommendation that we extend that so he can put the fertilizer down that he needs. He can farm it for another year. Then I think next year, we get to this earlier, uh, put bids out again and maybe do a multi-year that time. So whoever gets it next time knows that however long it is, two, three years, um, they know they're farming it and they can go about their normal, uh, timeline of working the ground and fertilizing and that sort of thing. So that would be my recommendation.
I'll move to approve.
Steve, you got something?
Yeah, one, one thing we should do when we, uh, do we have a written agreement with the farmer?
Yeah, I think you created it.
Put in the written agreement that it's just for one year and it will not automatically renew. Now, the reason for that, there's a statute that says if you don't notify a farmer before, uh, the end of the year, he automatically has another year added on. But it, so we want to make sure that he understands that there's no automatic renewal.
Okay. Would you, would you be able to draft that for us? Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
So based on that, technically, his renewal is anyway, right? Because he's up the automatic renewal?
No, I think we did this last year. So said that it was just for one year.
We did. Yeah, that's what the contract said.
Okay.
I'll second the motion then.
Any further discussion?
And we'll advise him that we're going to quote it next year, right? So he'll know this year that next year.
Yeah, yeah, we'll rebid it if anybody interested.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I pass this four to zero. Item fifteen, other?
Yeah, I've got a few things I'll talk about here. Um, we've got Veterans Day tomorrow, obviously. Have some things going on at eight forty-five, it's middle school, high school. Um, Veterans Day program in the, uh, varsity gym. One o'clock for elementary, they typically do a parade. Want to say congratulations at elementary school, had a, looked like what was a wonderful, uh, grand, grandparents' night. That place was packed. Monrovia Middle School had a neat presentation, Rachel's challenge. I was able to go and, and see that. It was all focused on being kind. I think, Tom, you were there. It was a really neat-
It was interesting.
Yeah, really neat presentation. So- Um, a few things at the high school. The Monrovia High School Happenings had an episode aired on Wish TV on October thirty-first. So congratulations to, to the communications department on that. Um, want to thank Citizens Bank for their financial support, uh, for the sponsorship of the live streaming of the girls, boys' basketball games. Plan to do seventeen games this season. So that'll be really cool. Uh, FAFSA completion night will be Wednesday, November nineteenth, four to seven in the high school library. We have two Lilly Endowment scholarship finalists from Monrovia High School, Aubrey Pearson and Avery Wolf. So congratulations to them. Middle School, High School Musical, uh, they'll be doing the Lightning Thief, November twenty-first, twenty-second at seven PM and then the twenty-third at three PM. The singing stars for October, first period, concert choir, Kelsey Wade. Second period, sixth grade boys, Robert Blakely. Third period, sixth grade girls, Ariana Harris. Fifth period, uh, seventh grade, uh, Kinsley Wilkerson. Sixth period, sixth grade girls, Emmeline Ringer. And seventh period, shooting stars, Alyssa Mentrop. A little bit about sports, um, first live stream of boys' girls' basketball is Thursday versus Western Boone on the IHSA Champions Network. Congratulations to the following fall sports athletes who are named to their respective Hoosier Legends all-conference teams. Football, Ryder Bain, Landon Hoffman, Colin Mann and Cohen Stinson. Girls volleyball, Ava Keane, Josie Kazee. Boys soccer, Kylan Corona. Girls soccer, Trinity Inglert, McKenna Reese, Anne Standiford, Nellie Standiford. Boys cross country, Jackson McPherson, Colton Smith, Jacob Williamson. Girls cross country, Keely Neese, uh, Lydia Tonner, Zoe Walls. And girls golf, Lila Wyrie and Avery Wolf. And the last thing I'll talk about is we are, uh, working on possibly having a work session next week. Uh, more information to come on date and time for that. Um, what the, the, what that's going to be about is, uh, we're going to talk with a consultant about possibly doing some strategic planning. Uh, and then here's some information on what it takes to run and win a referendum in case we want to do that in the future. So, um, more information to come on when we get a definite date and time set. Uh, obviously, a work session is open to the public. So you can come and hear that presentation if you wish. So that's all I have.
Next item is final public comments, if I have any. If I don't, then I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Mr. Sears, is there a second?
I'll say my part.
I'll second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Kai and Jack, I've got a bunch of signatures I need to get, if you don't mind.